We're good.
All right. All right, moving on to the committee of the whole. All right, so we're going to call that to order. We skip the pledge of allegiance, but we do need to do the roll call again.
Okay, Mrs. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mr. Jerick.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Rittenhouse. Mr. Scott here, Mr. Strobel.
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
All right, procedures for public participation are the same as they were about three minutes ago. So, moving on to announcements. Yes, is that right? Yeah. So, we do not have any agenda edits. There will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss litigation and personnel. And now for the superintendent's report. Ms., Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two items this evening. The first is, I would like to recognize our senior student board representatives, Chloe Fries and Samantha Cheffo, for their participation on the board. They'll be leaving us as they commence over the, across the stage on June 2nd. And we did want to take some time to recognize them and present a certificate to them. So if I could have Ms. Olson come on up here. Okay, and the second item I have this evening is just recognizing our Teacher Appreciation Week started today, runs through the end of this week. So I want to take this time to publicly thank our professional staff for all that they do for the students and families of our Blazer community, Blazer Learning Community. So, thank you to our teachers. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cooper. So, moving on to the student government report.
First, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to be on the board for the past two years. I've loved being here and I also love going to all of the schools. For the primary center, academically, students are taking their end of the year benchmark tests to track their final progress. And extracurricularly, last Thursday, the families came in for open house. And culturally, also at the primary center, the high school sports captains are helping out with Field Day, which is coming up this week.
Okay, I also wanted to say thank you for this opportunity. I really learned a lot and I'm sure I'm going to use a lot of the things that I've learned during like two years here in the future, so, thank you. For the middle school, academically, PSSA testing concluded. Keystone testing begins next week and students are completing their final assessments. Extracurricularly, spring sports are finishing up. Spring concerts will be taking place this week and next week. Several TSA teams are moving to nationals. The eighth grade choir will be attending music in the parks and great will be going on their respective school field trips. Culturally, bridge days are happening. May 19th is the rise in fourth grade and May 25th is the rise of eighth grade. And the eighth grade formal is next Friday on May 19th.
For the AIC, academically, the students are wrapping up PSSAs this week and the past week. For extracurricular, eighth grade is hosting the kickball tournament to kick off the end of the school year. And culturally, the high school sports captains are helping out as well at their field day, which is coming up this week. So, as the senior reps are graduating here, moving on, I'll be a senior next year. I'm a junior now, so me and Abbott Walter will remain here. And we have two new junior reps, one here today, Blake App, I'm going to stand up. There he is. And Ellie Wagner, who cannot be listed. And that concludes the two.
All right. Maybe I should learn how to use something. So, is this our last time to see you here until, until, will it be August that we see an extracurricular? In September, probably?
Probably.
Because you have to give a, you can't, the, the committee of the whole is early in the month and so schools won't be open yet, so.
Sports says September.
All right. So have a good summer. Have a good summer. You know, I already said, I already said good luck to you guys, but you know, have a good summer and we'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, student government report, do we, is Lauren here?
Hi.
Hi! Come on up to the, come on, come on up to the podium. The mic is on, just.
It's on.
It's on here, is there a, I think there's a.
Oh. Hello.
Hi.
Okay, good evening, Daniel Booth, school board members. Listed below on my agenda is a summary of spring's past and future accomplishments and the activities of student government. We would first like to thank those who have made these events possible. Thank you to administration at high school and at district levels for being supportive and helpful for the endeavors of this year. Thank you to school board for always trying to put the needs of their students first. And we'd like to thank our high school staff for helping us have a safe and enjoyable school year. So in our past, we done our spirit weeks. We had a very successful winter spirit week and we are excited to end this school year with our spring spirit week. This year, we included random fun Fridays, which are creative spirit days thrown in at the end of the week to help celebrate our school spirit. So, looking at the committee work, this year, we, next year, we're hoping to focus on having more like involvement in our committees. We kind of struggled with that this year, but we're looking for new ways to improve next year. So for elections, our student government elections were held on Tuesday and May 2nd. So our results are in and our new president is Owen Adamas. Our vice president is Cameron Bernuster and our secretary is Dan Kellister. So for the elementary reading, the reading day and the field day and kickball, student government was also asked to be a part of this and I just want to say, as someone who was part of it, it was the most fun I've ever had. We would like to thank Mr. Becker and Ms. Heffner and building staff. And thank you to Mr. Sports for his assistance in organizing our elementary field trips. The high school students greatly enjoyed reading to the elementary students and we're excited to be a part of the field day and kickball. We also had our polar plunge, which is called Reason for a Reason last year, and that was really fun. For prom, we want to thank Ms. Jones and our junior class. The juniors and seniors had such a great night. Our blood drive that held in May was also very successful and we want to congratulate the band and choir spring concerts. So looking at our spring sports wrap-up, we closed out spring sports season with our spring spirit week. Our sports teams played very well and we wish best of luck to teams or individuals who will be traveling into their postseason. We want to offer a shout-out to senior Tucker Hogan for becoming the PIA double A state champion, state champion in wrestling, and Dean Hauser, who made it into states. We also want to congratulate our boys bowling, who went into state championships and had a berth into nationals. And we are, as a senior, I am very excited for our graduation ceremony on June 2nd. Lastly, we want to thank you for an enjoyable and successful school year and we hope to make the 2023, 2024 school year even more exciting. I would like to thank the student government advisor for mentoring me and supporting me throughout the last two years and has given me confidence and opportunity to try new things. And on behalf of the entire student body, thank you, Dr. Cooper, for leading the district and we wish you well on your future endeavors.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Massenfield. Okay. Bye, Mr. Bailey. Are you, are you, are you, yeah, I figured, okay. Have a good night. All right, finance, moving on to finance. Is there anything under finance the board wants to discuss? The only thing I want to point out is that number four, I'm going to have to recuse myself when we do the voting, but everything else, because it's, it's my donation, so, but other than that, we're good. But we want to talk about anything else?
The social studies program, we're going to talk about that after next curriculum instruction, correct? Or we're not?
Correct. I'm assuming that's on the agenda for, it's, it's next week, right?
Yeah, I thought we had moved that up. No, I thought you had moved it up to put on the agenda. I have it on the committee hold. Yes, that's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah, because right now it's listed as, just coming out.
Right.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, there's no recommendation from the committee, that's all. And.
So you're going to strike 10?
Pardon me?
Are you going to strike 2 a 10?
We're going to talk, it's not a voting meeting.
This isn't a voting, no, you're fine. This isn't a voting meeting and that, that committee meeting will happen before we vote on this. So if there's a reason, if we need to change this consent item in any way, we can deal with it then.
Never mind, I'll, I'll, of course, curriculum instruction committee.
Anything else anybody wants to talk about? Okey-dokey, can I, any, any public comment on finance? Okay, programs, there is one item for disposing of textbooks. Do we have anything we want to talk about? Any public comment on programs? Retirements and resignations, there's one item there. Any, under number four, any, any discussion by the board? Any public comment? Leaves, a little bit more under four B and appointments as well? Any, any comments, questions concerned on any of that? Any public comment on personnel? Presentations by board members, Mr. Scott.
Oh, sorry, as correspondents.
Yep.
I have nothing to read for.
Okay. BCIU, Mr. Jerick. Mr. Jerick?
Is he still on there?
He dropped off.
He just dropped off. We will come back to BCIU. BCTC, Mrs. Thompson?
Hi, we met on April 26th, went over the 2023 strategic plan, new sort, new student orientation next year was May 3rd through the 4th. They did a decision today, this is the first one.
My apologies.
No, it's okay. I've, I moved it on to Mrs. Thompson for BCTC, but then we'll swing back, we'll circle back around to BCIU in just a second, okay?
Okay.
All right. Yeah, so I saw a couple people from school, like friends of mine who have kids at that age, make announcements that their kids are going next year, so I know a lot of people made that decision and so on.
So they have their decision date on May 1st with the Miller Center for the Arts to celebrate their students either going to workforce, military, or college. They have a NASA launch date. Their students are actually creating handrails for the international space station.
Cool.
They're pretty cool. The student built house is almost finished and I'm putting that on the market very soon here. Senior recognition is May 30th at the San Panda Arena and we have over 2,000 students projected for next year. Next meeting is May 24th.
Awesome. Any questions, comments from the board for Ms. Thompson? Okay, coming back to BCIU, Mr. Jerick?
Thanks, Julia.
Yeah.
BCIU just basically handled housekeeping items. They approved some contracts. They did some personnel items, again, basically just in-house stuff, nothing that really affected us directly. And their next meeting is going to be the 19th of May.
Okay. All right, any questions for Mr. Jerick? Lot of end-of-year stuff. Under COLA, I think we've heard your report on that 11th meeting, right? There was a meeting April 11th and we've heard that already, right?
September, which was the next one.
Okay. Any other reports, was there tax board, did they meet? No, okay. All right, any public comment on any of those meetings? All right, monthly headcount statistics, do we have any comments, questions, concerns from the board for the administration on that? Any public comment? Curriculum instruction.
Okay. We met April 24th and we had talked about the center academic connections and at that time, as of the 24th, about 150 students were signed up. April 30th was a cutoff, so there was a possibility that there had been a few more than that. Second annual career fair received positive feedback. We talked about the social studies textbook review. It was a broad search that was narrowed down to two sources. Grade eight and US history one were the two that were prioritized most. And Shane Cockle spoke from the audience and was concerned about the cost of social studies materials and we talked through that.
All right, any questions for Ms. Albright on that? Any public comment on curriculum instruction? Extracurricular, Ms. Bell.
Yes, we met earlier this evening. We talked about, we have strength sports update. We had a tennis player in the districts in a single snatch. We have unified track moving forward in regionals and the winner of that will move forward to states. They saw boys volleyball are kind of weaving it out right now to see where they move forward. We have three track runners moving forward in hurdle, javelin, pole vault, about 100 meter and 200 meter. We have boys bowling moving forward in nationals and then we have two boys wrestlers moving forward in nationals. We had some responses to our surveys for girls across the middle school, but we're going to keep that open for another week. And then we're also doing a survey for girls wrestling. That seems to be an upcoming item and being open as a PIA double A sport. We also talked about the scoreboard at the stadium and having some issues with a flickering in its 12-years-old, so we're looking at that. And then they also added to, to vote cheer uniforms being added to the uniform schedule that they will be school supplied rather than purchased by the cheerleaders and on the four-year registration.
Okay, any questions from the board from Ms. Bell? Any public comment on extracurricular? Okay, everybody get comfortable in their seats because now we got facilities and transportation, Mr. Rittenhouse.
We also had a meeting today before this one. We talked about pastor, it's a human cabinet in the middle school cafeteria that has, is no longer working and needs to be replaced. We've got quotes on those and had one out committee to vote me in. Lifted, lifted equipment for the middle school was inspected, found that it was not operable or not be operated in current condition, needs to be repaired. We have a quote from United Ronalds for that repair. We're also going to move out of committee. HVAC compressor in the middle school cafeteria, this is a rooftop unit that compressor has failed, or believes to have failed and will need to be replaced. We have a quote for that, that we are going to move that out of committee. We're also asking for quotes to replace both those 20-year-old units, just to get an idea of what price is going to be on that. High school, NHG painting, that's a product they want to do over the summer. We got quotes from, on those, we got three quotes for that and we're going to move one of those out of committee, have that done over the summer, over, I believe it was a two-week period, have that done. High school doors 10 and 15, repairs to both those doors. We have a quote that is going to be tweaked out, used to have that, but those repaired as well over the summer. Then, high school heart room training, it's been having issues, is not training, backs up more into the classroom. We're looking at having the train replaced, but at this moment, we're just going to have it inspected, video inspected to see fully what the issue is. Then we talked about how to apply donation compression education to schools, the replacement of playground equipment. Like we, we discussed that for a little while and we're running out of time, so we moved on to the studio RFP, a moving proposal from SSC for a new three-year commitment with them. Then we had a brief update on Eagle Sound project, which is progressing, near completion, about 90% of the time. So pictures that we supplied, they look excellent, so, thanks again for, for doing that. And that's, that's all we had time for.
Yeah, and, and I think that our decision was that the discussion of authorizing additional money for the playground equipment, we were just going to talk about that in the next meeting, right?
Yeah, we had made a decision.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that clear.
Next meeting will be different.
Yep, okay. Any questions for Mr. Rittenhouse? Any public comment on facilities? Okay, finance. Okay, so what, what had happened was, since the last time we had a meeting, we got new, we had new computers and I cannot get my notes, so I'm really hoping, Mr. Lulli, you can tell us what happened at that meeting? The, the finance meeting from last week or two weeks ago? I apologize, I can't, I can't even get into the agenda to find out what was there.
That's why I don't touch that computer. Right. We worked on, we worked on the budget, we worked on the budget workshop.
I don't, I apologize for putting you on the spot.
Yes. We worked on the budget workshop. We're also looking at the home set, car set, looking at the numbers there, how it came in from last year to this year.
Right.
We also looked at the, we looked at food service, management reports, annual renewal.
I just remembered the one other really important thing that we authorized, like talking to a new, a new debt service guy?
We were looking at possibility of bringing Concord Financial in. It's a, it's a new person to look at our debt, maybe look at terms and a breakdown where he can save us money. And what Concord does is, it's, it's a no-service fee and he works for free, more or less when we consolidate our debt, that's when he makes his money. So what, what he's doing is just taking a look at our debt, seeing what the principle is, what our payments are, and what we can do going forward. He'll also help out on reports for reporting purposes, you know, with the business section. And the current person that we have right now, he works for Raymond James, he's very good and I'm not in a position that I'd switch or look, you know, real fast at something else.
But he has recently switched, switched competence, right? And we haven't, and we haven't had a debt, a debt reconsolidation, you know, opportunity to lower our interest rate on any of our long-term debt since very, like right at the beginning of COVID, like maybe 2020.
That's true. And what, what they'll do is, they'll consult everything, give us some reports, what's going to be paid off, and it's more or less helpful for the business office and data room to get some information together. So, we're not doing any change right now, we, you know, just want to bring the new set of eyes into the debt.
I just want to, thank you, appreciate it.
Oh, sure. Anything else?
No, that was, that was, that was it for the finance meeting. And in, and in the, the budget meeting, we had our discussion of setting up the budget for the, the recommendation from our finance folks, as always, is an incremental tax increase. The board members who were there felt that, you know, maybe that's not what we're looking for, for this year. So that's, that's the hope, is that we don't have to go that road, but that's, that was, that was the recommendation from, from the finance folks. I just wanted to point that out. So, again, we'll have the, that, that, because we voted on it just now, the budget will be available for folks to review publicly and then we'll be doing a little bit more number crunching with, once we get our final bills in for June, we'll have a better idea of what this actual was for last, for this current year that we're in. So, that gives us a better idea what our front balance is going to be. Questions? I didn't know, Ms. Leoni, if you had a question on that? Okay. Any questions, comments for Mr. Lulli or me? Obviously, I'm, I really, obviously really know what's going on. As I can pull it up from my computer, but he might be able to sign it for you. Any public comment on finance?
Rachel Markle, press to be first, bro. And I guess my question is, is looking through the budget from last year and this year's budget, you meant a long-term debt, why not $10 million? Can you put on the website exactly what is in that $10 million? And did you go through all the fin, all the finances since taking the new position? Did you dig through?
We dug through and that's, that's why we brought in the new consultant. And he, he brought all the debt service, total amount of debt, and then he brought each individual, the time period, when we had our debt, and what he did, he put together more or less paper for us to review and look at where we're at, what's getting paid off. And then he'll come in and he'll come to talk to the board and he'll give a presentation, show the debt so you can see, you know, what's on each school, how much, you know, when the debt's going away. And he welcomed coming in here and talking to everyone, but it was, it was good to get a fresh set of eyes. And for me coming in too, I get to look at the debt and see what we can do and using him as a resource, maybe consolidate or lower our payments. So, it's, it's, it's something we're looking into. It's, it's, it's a great part.
Yes, and if you could get the P and L and all the detail on the website, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy, oh, is there anybody else?
I haven't had a flame.
What?
What?
Go ahead.
Yeah, regarding the debt service, I mean, we were doing this four years, three years, five years ago. I mean, I think it's wonderful that we're bringing them in on a part finance committee. We agreed on that. The opportunity to lower our interest rate on the other ones is probably like nonexistent. I mean, we had some really phenomenal opportunities to roll some of that debt four and five years ago when the interest rates were aggressive. So I think it's great that we have, and I think it's a great choice from the committee and from the, from the school administration to have some fresh eyes come in, but the opportunity is going to be probably slim to none on being able to, I, I'd like to, you know, to be able to save money just because of that, the interest, it's going to be highly dependent on interest rate at this point, so.
Sure. And, and the person that comes in, what you don't know is, he comes in and he looks at all our debt and the only way he makes money is to save us money. So, we're not paying him anything. He's helping out with our financials and he's giving us the data so that we can see, okay, this is associated with this school, this is, this debt's associated with this school, like it's a little understanding better. So, I'm thinking sometime August or September. I'm thinking sometime August or September, maybe bring him in, break down everything at the end of the year.
Sounds good.
Did have one other question.
Yeah, but.
For Gretchen, what schedule were you looking at there, which is a $10 million increase?
It's just the regular budget. I did a comparison of the last four years. And the amount of the long-term bond went up $10 million from last year's budget to the 2022, 2023.
Long-term bonds.
Long-term bonds. I like the detailed page. And I'd like it on the front and not just in the comment section.
Yeah, I wrote down the, what she, what she had asked about. I wrote it down, so we can.
Thank you.
Anything else? Policy?
So we had a policy meeting tonight at 5:30. We discussed four policies regarding Act 55. Not going into all the details, but next meeting will be June 5th.
Okay. And there's stuff on the agenda there that's going to, that's on second reading, so they'll be voted on next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Mr. Scott on policy? Any public comment on policy? Technology? Ms. Shrubel?
Yeah, that's a good one. I have the same technology issue you have, I can't get the notes. However, I do know there was a quick, we had.
I know you wrote some notes.
Equipment replacement, and I have that report. I just can't access it from here right now. And so there was a fair amount of equipment being replaced. However, it was all within side of the budget, because we kind of bounced them out over the years. The, he talked about the art, technology and the services with the RFPs. And then the biggest one was the website community engagement platform and how well it's going and where it's, where it's heading. And I believe we were in the final stage. I want, I want to say June to be able to finish it, but I want to get wrong information, so.
Yeah.
But all the people that were involved, being able to add things and starting to move things over and limiting pages to make it a lot easier for everybody to read websites.
Right. Okay, any questions for Mr. Shrubel from the board? Any public comment on technology? Old business is the meeting minutes. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board on that? Any public comment? New business? I don't think I have anything. Yep, none. Any presentations by the public on issues?
I've seen none.
No, stop.
Okay.
Shane Cockle, 8:30, got your camera.
Hi.
I'm here to talk once again about the TIF agreement. I brought some more information where Amity Township can clearly cover the cost. They collect $140 a quarter per unit. You times that by four, that's $560 per unit. 329 residents, that's $185,000 of extra income they'll be getting. Their assessment, you know, their taxes, 2.65 mils for just the assessment for the real estate. At $300,000 a unit, you're looking at around $250,000 of extra income. So you're, they're looking at gaining between $400 and $450,000 a year, just on that, just on the, that one development. I, I sent an email asking if there was any new updates on the numbers.
I didn't see, I sent you something at the after, the last?
Yeah.
Before the last meeting, but I, I might have missed it, because I was, I was gone, so.
Has there been any new meetings or new numbers on the, the cost? I also said information for the Pennsylvania American Water Company. I have their phone number here, so someone should reach out from home, because they actually paid for the installation, which was part of your TIF guarantee to install. But they actually paid for it, so that was close to $1 million on the water end. So really, it should be just the sewer that, that the school district, if you choose to do it. I also printed out there, it's a pretty neat picture of a dollar bill. So when Amity Township residents click on it, they see this tiny little sliver that they have to pay in taxes to the township. And this giant section here is what the rest goes to the school district. So it's showing, you know what, we're fiscally responsible in keeping this number down. Dana Boone School District is not. But then they're asking you to pay for their sewer line, where they could easily increase, even a quarter mil would easily cover it, this, this project, along with the $200,000 they're going to collect in extra sewer, and the other $200, $250,000 in real estate assessment. Not including also the money they're going to be getting from the Pennsylvania American Water Company. So, I really would like you guys, 50-10, let me know when the next updated numbers are.
Okay.
Is that a public meeting, TIF meeting? Like, I mean, respectfully, could Shane go to a TIF meeting next time?
Any results from that TIF meeting that Ms. Thompson, myself, reports out will be reported out to committee of the whole, once we get, once there's a, a meeting that happens again, we've not been contacted. And we would include the gentleman from, that we've been working with throughout the process from that, the county.
Shane, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Seriously, I wanted to say for the record, at least me, I'm definitely not leaning towards this right now. So, please understand that, I think, I don't know, I can't speak for anyone else, but we really appreciate what you've done. You've done a lot of labor. We've talked a couple of times on the phone. I think he regrets when I called, so. Lasts a long time.
Anyone else?
Valerie, recommend Amity? Something to hear me?
Yeah.
Anyway, I was actually just bringing up an inquiry that has come up quite a few times when I've gone door-to-door. But we are a district that prides ourselves on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so my question is, is, and this is comparing other school districts to ours, why is there an annual fee for activities when we have a lot of federal funding coming our way? And these activities are not covered? Because that just tells the students, who aren't necessarily financially capable of paying these fees, that they can't be a part of these programs. And so that's a big issue. Like, there's a, I know the fee seems nominal to some, but as someone from a very poor background myself, I would not have been able to afford to be, be a part of the music program or the athletics program if I had to pay a fee for it. So I want to bring that up as something that I do believe this school needs to look into.
Let me just, let me, let me just say something. I, I don't want to take away from the fact that you brought it up. However, the, the meeting that I don't have my notes for, Mr. Cockle actually got up and said exactly the same thing. And, 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 you know, I'm not, you know, it's not context. And, but, at the time, I said, you know, that, you know, that was something I think it's worth looking into, especially since we've had such a decline in, I mean, we just had, we just had our, our sports, our athletic director come here and say in the last meeting that, you know, we are having, we aren't having the kind of numbers in our sports programs as we've had pre-COVID. And we aren't having as many kids doing multiple sports in a year. So, I mean, we are looking at it. Yeah, so, but we haven't, we haven't had the, like, how much money does bring in, how, you know, can we afford it, kind of conversation yet. It is, but it just happened, like, a month ago, that he, that he mentioned it.
Student one free.
Yes. Yes, student one free and reduced lunch do.
Do get.
Yeah, I was going to say. There are students that don't pay it.
But I, but I, but I get it that, you know, you know, ability to pay and, and be involved.
My parents made too much to get a reduced.
Right.
I still had no money.
I understand, I understand.
There's that whole gap, which you can say that there's subsidies and there's whatever, but there's still a gap of kids.
Yep.
And so we need to be a part. And so, one of the big things that I have brought to Cooper, Dr. Cooper and yourself and everybody else, is, is activities is what unifies the student body. I cannot stress that enough, that these activities unify the bodies. So when there's a fee, something you have to pay, that in itself divides students and is a conversation that most kids are not comfortable having, saying, oh, I can't afford it. Do your awesome in basketball, do your awesome in football.
And they might just make up an excuse why they're not playing. I understand that, yeah.
That's correct. And so, and another thing is, for pre-COVID, we also weren't doing, that I can remember, and you guys do correctly, Bonroll, before COVID, there wasn't this cardiovascular whole, like, EKG check before you'd be getting on the field. Did you guys know that?
I do know what's happening, I don't know if it, I don't know if it predated that.
So, it, it was not happening before COVID. And so now it's this whole thing that the athletics director has to approve for these kids to even participate.
Okay.
So, I've got my time.
Isn't it?
Thank you.
May I have to give you anything?
I'm not going to.
Yes, you do. If you had, if you had COVID, you'd have to get an EKG, because that causes cardiovascular problems. And you have to sign up on the.
Isn't it just a checklist, Valerie?
It's not a checklist. It is, you, I had to take my daughter to the doctor, fill out this form, and because she had COVID January, in order for her to participate in spring sports, the doctor had to prove that because her fever wasn't more than three days for her to even participate in the sport. So that's another issue. That's another thing we're, we're dealing with too. I don't think the director brought that up.
Thank you.
Sorry, they were speaking.
Oh, I understand.
I gave you more time than there was.
Jimmy.
Anyone else?
I better have to work.
Tell him I showed up tonight, all right? Because I heard last reading, I.
You mean your other half, Valerie.
Better. Oh, no, not better, sorry.
Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Oh, then come on.
My name is Dave Young, I live in Douglasville. I'm Roman's father. Roman left us on September 8th of last year. Since September 9th, we have been told that school personnel who spoke to my son the day before were unwilling to speak to us. We had meetings scheduled and canceled one hour later. We have repeatedly attempted to contact Brad Cooper for weeks prior to getting any response. The response we've received approximately two months after the incident and stated that he felt threatened by the tone of my email and our repeated attempts to speak with him. My son's property has been withheld from us for six months. We went to recover the property. Brad Cooper emailed every student's parent a grossly inaccurate synopsis of what took place when we recovered my son's property. A portion of that said, "A member of the community attempted to gain access to the building through misrepresentation." "The only misrepresentation that occurred was your email, sir, attempting to portray me as a threat to those who don't know me. I am here to show you that I am not a threat to anybody's safety. I have never threatened anyone or conducted myself in any threatening manner at any point. If I had done so or acted in a threatening matter, I am 100% positive that Chief Jeff Smith would have taken action and placed me under arrest. His inactions to do so lead me to believe that he too does not consider me a threat to anybody's safety. We are aware of meetings taking place among school officials where my reputation is being defamed while falsehoods and innuendos are spread. And your attempt to remove me from school grounds and activities shows you have no consideration to my other son, who attends the middle school. I have missed lacrosse games of his due to the location. My 13-year-old son understands all too well your callousness, sir. If there are no threats made and no evidence exists of any threats or threatening behavior, there can only be one logical solution as to your behavior. You feel threatened by my family's questions and apparently my mere presence. You could have reached out and engaged in a conversation in an effort to see what failures occurred throughout this situation, if any at all. You didn't. My question to you, Mr. Cooper, is why have you chosen to take this path in addressing this tragic matter? And I'd like to thank everybody that has showed up and supported us this whole time. And I hope everybody sees through the lies."
Thank you all, too. Thank you. Anyone else?
I love you. Small piece, Bertrow. First, I want to say, we all have the freedom of speech, and I'm going to say, in my opinion, Cooper, I am counting out the days until you are gone. What that man said and what you have done for this district was nothing but good. Not good. My opinion, you've done nothing great. You had thrown your finger in my face, screamed at me to the point where I thought you were going to hit me. Okay? Every board member that was here that night, I hope you remember that. The only great thing is, we will continue to pay your health benefits, because you are not fulfilling your contract and retiring early for some reason. Anyway, moving on, Julia, I do hope and pray that you lose that seat. Our students and taxpayers are not the first for you. I witnessed that. I stood here since, I'm thankful Transportation brought me into this meeting a year ago. I've sat here, listened to your lies over and over again. You have really discussed the meeting as a precedent. You sit there and you sat there, you sat there and promised after RFP was closed, bids were in, first of all, contract, you look at it, it's all wrong. But nobody cares about that, because it was a backdoor deal. Anyway, and you said, many, this whole room was filled with concerns and questions. And what did you say? I'd rather go with the unknown. That was the unknown for our children and Transportation. Rather go with the unknown. And you did. And then it came to landscaping, cutting grass, and you said, let's not fix what's broken. So it shows what you were clearly worried about. Those pictures I showed you, those are diesel fuel. On every, if you, when you leave here, if you go out and park a lot and look at every bus, that's diesel. Whoever's fueling those buses, we're paying that diesel fuel, every taxpayer. They are not watching, so that fuel is dripping out. It's disgusting. Those buses are not clean. The other picture is, is of a lot where they, they fuel the buses, you can see the spillage. Okay? Over the winter, kids are getting sick, over and over again. I went to both, well, my kids are in sports. There was a mop and bucket outside, so if a kid throws up, do you know what was happening? They were taking that mop and bucket and wiping up that vomit and sticking it back in the bucket to wipe it again with the next bus. This is going with the unknown. Thank you, Julia. I was so disappointed Friday at the basketball game, as I've been mentioning about May is mental health awareness. I asked you about it to make it aware in the school. You did not show up at that game. There was many good points brought up. There was many good points brought up. I really don't believe you don't care because you have not brought that up, answered my questions. You were not there. But let's put $1,000 into the library and hope your mistakes are forgotten about. My time's up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Gretchen Markle, Pearl Street, Birds Row. I would like to bring to the community's attention that we are dealing with a lame duck school board because Dr. Cooper, the superintendent, refuses to do his job. I've heard complaints from board members that they can't get anything done because you refuse to do your job. Mr. Flowers conveniently sends your district white emails and phone blasts. What other parts of your job does he do for you? How about getting a doctor for our district so our children can get treated by the nurse to get Tylenol when they have a headache or medicine for an upset belly? How about being approachable and treating the teachers and staff with respect? As the TSA students whose parents leave good money for their children with their projects to be transported in a coach bus, but because you could not be bothered to do your job, the students had to take two regular school buses to the event. You won't even acknowledge and answer questions from board members. Let me remind you that our, that your salary comes from our hard-earned tax dollars and from seniors that can barely make ends meet. Since I attended bi-weekly meetings, I can attest that you've been checked out since January. The disinterested look on your face with your eyes holding the back of your head and your total disrespect for your position speaks volumes of the content of your character. A couple months back, a parent questioned you why you were retiring. After the meeting, I saw the insane look of rage on your face when you ran to scream at her. I recorded your temper tantrum, screaming that it was none of her business asking why you're, of your sudden retirement. Maybe she was over the target, I don't know. You broke your contract and, and like Melissa said, you expect the taxpayers of this community to foot the bill for your benefits until you turn 65. I've spoken to many voters in Region 3 over the past several weeks. Let me tell you, people are not happy about this at all. If you cannot perform your job duties, then maybe you should leave before June 30th. Otherwise, I say on behalf of the stakeholders of this school district, do your job. And you vote the young family one hell of an apology.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have a meeting again next week, so do we have a motion to adjourn? I got a second.
I made it.
All right.